Good evening, welcome to the June 3, 2009 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission which I'll call to order at this time. We have a quorum present so we'll move right into our agenda. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the May 6, 2009 regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have four public hearings that we'll be conducting tonight, the first of which is an annexation study for 16.11 acres along West Thompson Lane. Ms. Ely, good evening.
Hi, good evening, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members. You have before you a request to annex, or from this Planning Commission to annex a portion of four separate parcels located along the northern side of West Thompson Lane. The front 300 feet of these parcels is already within Murfreesboro City limits and was annexed in the 1980s. Planning Commission considered this item when I conducted a reconnaissance study and found out that the two house, or the house and the six mobile homes that are within the study area had been receiving city services in times past. I did find out from my research that the Murfreesboro Fire Department, the Murfreesboro Police Department, and the Murfreesboro Solid Waste Department have been providing services to the property for at least the past five years. I did also discover that the Murfreesboro Water Department is currently providing water at a rate that we currently charge those who are within Murfreesboro City limits. The property is located along the west side of North Borough Court subdivision and north of the Segal Road and the Segal Road High School. The properties are within Murfreesboro open growth boundary and are contiguous with city limits on three sides, on its eastern, southern, and western lot lines. I put on overhead an ortho photograph of the area which you can see the single-family home, if you want to put that up on the screen. Single-family home and the six mobile homes. There's currently one single-family home in the study area that's within city limits which is located at 694 West Thompson Lane. At Planning Commission's request, I did inquire with the Murfreesboro Electric Department to find out if the properties have the capability of voting in Murfreesboro City elections, and I did find out that they are registered with Murfreesboro City to vote in Murfreesboro City elections, and so I wanted to point that out to you. According to the plan of services, we can provide city services to the study area upon the effective date of annexation. We'll resume the services which we've ceased such as solid waste services if it is indeed annexed. If you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, I or Mr. Adelot will be able to answer them, and... So I think that's all that I needed to add before the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ely?
These residents have been able to vote in the city elections and they've received other city services during this last five years?
That's right. Councilwoman Young, I did include a memo in your packets which I've updated from the one that you got before outlining the different services that are available to them, and I did say that on Friday, April 17, I spoke with the representative of the Rutherford County Election Commission, Mrs. Burris Lyles, and she informed me that the addresses ranging from 674 to 688 West Thompson Lane are listed as RN Ward 10, which means that the residents of those addresses can vote in city elections.
Okay.
Of course, that's just a small, I guess, just a fraction of the other services they've been getting from the city, and it's up to you to look at the area and see if it would be best served inside the city or looked outside the city. These structures are the only ones along the stretch of West Thompson Lane, actually along the stretch of West Thompson Lane from Memorial to Broad Street that are not in the city limits, so I think that's why there's been some confusion in the past, and we've accidentally served them city services in the past without them actually paying taxes for those structures.
Let me ask, do you want me to ask a question?
Whatever you want to do, Ms. Ely.
Let's just wait until the public hearing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, let me go through the brief rules that we conduct our public hearings by here. When I open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward to the podium to speak. Please give your name and address when you come forward. Make all your comments or questions directly to the Planning Commission and not members of the staff or the audience. If you do have questions, the staff will make notes of your questions and try to answer them to your satisfaction at the end of the public hearing. Please hold your comments and questions no more than three minutes, and you'll have one opportunity for each public hearing to come forward. So all that being said, I'll open the public hearing for this matter at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, I'm Charles Hale. I live at 674 West Thompson Lane, and I have several questions I need to ask. First of all, I want to refute the information that we are city voters and are receiving city services. This is not so. To give you a brief history of what transpired out there, about 20 years ago, 19, 20 years ago, Mr. Adelot asked me for 100 feet so he could connect the new subdivision, doesn't it? And I said, "Fine," you know. It was a 100-foot section, and I've been paying taxes on that ever since. Then a few years after that, he said he needed 300 feet, and if I would let him have the 300 feet, I would get the city amenities, garbage pickup, et cetera, which was fine with me, you know. Then all of a sudden, somebody said, "He don't live in the city. He can't have garbage pickup," so they confiscated all my garbage cans. But that's neither here nor there, and I'm not... I don't need your city services on that. But my main question is, is what is the purpose of annexing this property?
Okay. We'll make a note of that and ask the staff to address that after the public hearing, sir.
All right, sir. And my next question is, how can public servants ask for annexation when the property owner don't want it? Shouldn't it go for the property owner first? And as far as the issue of being able to vote in city elections, we are not eligible to vote in city elections. I don't know where y'all getting your information, but I'm still in the county, and I've got problems with if they change it over to the city. I'm the only house out there that's on Middle Tennessee Electric Services, so I don't know how they would change that over or the city would buy it or what, you know. And I'm not asking for anything else and just be left alone.
Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Dennis Cole. I live at Barfield, I mean, excuse me, in the Barfield community. I live at 1935 Ivy Glen Drive. My sister and I own one of the tracts that you're wanting to annex. We butt right against North Borough Court subdivision. It's a 5.2 acres, has no structures, has never received any city services that I'm aware of. There's not, it is not raw land. We bush hog it, and so it's not, you know, wild or anything, but again, there's no structures on it. We don't have anything that would require any city services at all, so I'm not real sure why mine would be annexed also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Adelot, would you please try to answer the questions Mr. Hale had and comment on some other items?
Yes, sir, I would. I am familiar with this property, and I'm going to point out something that's maybe a little interesting to you. This property, the front of it, was annexed in 1986, and it did go through two annexations, first a, I think, a 100-foot strip and then later a 300-foot strip. Interestingly, that happened before my time as the planning director. I think I may have been on the planning staff, but I don't think that I did the annexation study. Over the years, though, I have had several conversations with Mr. Hale about the property, but that didn't predate my tenure as planning director. The first thing I want to talk about is the purpose of the annexation, and what is happening with this property is that the front portion, the front 300 feet of the property, has been in the city for over 20 years, but the back part, and you can see on the map, the area that's colored yellow is inside the city with the area that's colored orange being the remainder of the property that's being considered. On this parcel, almost in this location, there's four, five mobile homes, and then on this parcel, there is one single-family residence right here, and this is the residence of Mr. Hale. Mr. Hale owns both these parcels, both the mobile home park, if you want to call it a park, it's not really what I'd consider a park, but it's a small park because there's four, five of them. On this parcel, Mr. Richards owns it, and his house is about right here. Mr. Cole owns this property, and there are no structures at all. The problem is that the front portions of the parcels are in the city, and because of that, the various utilities, the various public service departments that provide city services and non-city services, they get a little bit confused. The front part is in the city, and so the address is a city address. The back part of the property is not addressed separately, but it's not inside the city. So when 911, for instance, looks, gets a call, the address comes in, 628, or whatever the address is for the mobile home, and it's routed to the city because the address, the mailbox, the front part, is in the city, but the back part is not. So this becomes confusing. A new resident moves into the mobile home park, and they think, "Oh, look, there's the garbage truck. That's the city garbage. We get garbage pickup." So they call our Solid Waste Department, "When am I going to get my... I'm a new resident. I want my garbage picked up." And the guy's driving the truck that delivers us, this guy I don't know what he's talking about, and he gets out there and he delivers a truck, and next thing you know, garbage service is being provided to the mobile home park. It's a situation where the fire department gets a call, and they want to make sure that it is correctly done, but the fire department is about two miles to the south and to the They will respond because the address is routed to them. It's in the city. They don't check their maps. There are no maps to check per se. This is an electronic world. The address seems to be theirs. So the purpose of the annexation is to clarify a confusing matter. The water service is being served to this mobile home park and to Mr. Hale's residence, I think to Mr. Hale's residence. He may still be on the well, but to the mobile home park, and it's a city water customer. It's in the city water jurisdiction, but it's not paying an outside-the-city rate because there was confusion. Someone keyed it in as a city address, therefore it got a city rate, when in actuality, over the last number of years, they should have been paying one and a half times the inside-the-city rate. Sewer is available to the property, but they aren't hooked to it, but they could, so they're not, that's not caused the problem. First responders with the fire department and the ambulance service. The ambulance station is diagonally across the road and down a little ways, but when the call comes, the first responders rush out there because it's a city-coded address. So that's the reason for this. It's confusing. And what we want to do by studying this, we want to call attention to the situation and make a decision. Do we annex it so that there is no confusion on this side, or do we make a careful approach and not annex it so that we can advise everybody that we studied it and we want to call it to your attention that it is not in the city? Because either way will work. It's not something that we're anxious to annex because of revenues or anything. It's we're anxious to set the matter straight. Now, how did this come about? This came about because unfortunately, I reside close by, well, very fortunately, I reside close by, and it was called my attention. The garbage cans caught it to my attention. I caught it to the Solid Waste Director's attention. The Solid Waste Director looked into it. As a matter of caution, actually speaking with Mr. Hale on the phone about it, I discussed it with our deputy city manager, and he says, "You need to make sure that you make a good decision." Why didn't the Planning Commission, the planning staff study this, decide if it ought to be recommended for annexation to the council? So that's what we're doing. And yes, the state law and our protocol gives the staff the ability to study these type of things and make recommendations to the city council whether or not a property owner desires his property to be annexed. So that's how it came about, and that's my authority to initiate this with you. We are advised by the Election Commission that they have coded these addresses to be able to vote in the city election. That is the source of our information, and it is our understanding because the address ranges show up to be in the city. That is the way they have treated them. Now, Mr. Hale and the residents of the mobile home park may have refrained from voting in the city elections. That's been their choice, but apparently, had they showed up to vote, they would have been able to cast their vote. I bet you that this is in the city, the county commission, or I bet this is coded to be in the county commissioner's district who's inside the city. I think this would be Ms. Ely's district, and I bet you that just across the city limits, otherwise would be a different commissioner. Now, about the electric. The property, one parcel removed, well, I guess Mr. Richards is a Murfreesboro Electric customer. Murfreesboro Electric has electric lines directly across the street, and it is a very easy matter. Murfreesboro Electric and Middle Tennessee Electric will negotiate customers. They will set a process to change over, and it will be done without even the lights flickering. That's the way they usually are able to do it. So it will be a very easy change over from one service provider to the other. Are there any other questions? Yeah, I want to talk about Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole is very correct. His property is kind of caught up in this because he's undeveloped, but he is similarly situated to the other four parcels, and we include them in the study area. There are no structures or resident population on those lots that have caused any confusion to us. He's just kind of caught up in it because he's one of the four parcels we looked at.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Adelot. Any questions for Ms. Adelot?
Ms. Adelot, the water service for the mobile homes, who provides that?
That's provided by Murfreesboro Water Department.
Is there a higher rate for outside-city services than there are for inside-city services?
There's supposed to be a 1.5 times the rate for outside-the-city customers.
So if these five or six mobile homes could theoretically have a rate increase on their water?
It would be my belief that they should be so treated because that is our ordinance, to provide water service to outside-the-city customers at 1.5 times the rate of an inside-the-city customer.
One of the things that I'm looking at here is the health and safety issue. 911 could be confused with this, you know, I know our fire department would roll anyway, it being the first few hundred feet inside and the second few hundred feet out, but from a health, you know, a safety issue, we need to make sure that those mobile homes are protected. Somebody needs to be the designated to do that. And as you mentioned earlier in your comments, either we need to do it or somebody needs to make sure that it's done. You're going to have police calls, you're going to have fire calls, you're going to have emergency ambulance calls, and I think there's a history of those out there also.
And Mr. Young, and I interrupt you, and I apologize for that, but I do want to point out that police service was not something I discussed, but they have made calls, responses out there. There have been domestic violence calls in particular that are often very difficult to deal with, and they have been reported, and we have responded to those mobile homes, our police department have.
Do we have any information on how much more of the property tax would be for Mr. Hale and his people?
Yes, sir. In your plan of services, I did, let me find the page numbers so I can direct you to it. Page 11, I've got a section that's titled Taxes and Revenue, and in the charts, I estimated the city taxes that would be due by all three of the property owners in the study area, and you can see that Mr. and Mrs. Hale own two of the parcels, and the taxes that I have put there are what would be in addition to what they're currently paying. So for the property in which Mr. Hale lives on, he'll be paying, in addition to the $310 he paid in 2008 for both parcels, he'll pay $555 for his property and $693 for the mobile homes which he rents out. The mobile homes are taxed at a higher rate because the Rutherford County Property Assessor has identified that as commercial property, not in the fact that the zoning would say that it's commercial, but because he's making money off of this and producing revenue. It's taxed at 40% of its assessed value rather than 25% like his house would be. So if you do look at the page 11, you can see the estimated city taxes which they would be paying in addition to the taxes that they pay now.
How would the city view that as commercial property or as residential property?
It would absolutely be zoned RS 15 if it were annexed into the city of Murfreesboro, which is a single-family residential district, and the mobile home park would just become a non-conforming use. Annexation does not affect how their property assessor assesses their property. That's something that's determined in that office, and annexation doesn't affect it at all.
But because it is rental property, it would be assessed as at the higher rate?
That's right, and the number that is on that page is reflected at that 40% commercial rate.
So the city really won't have anything to do with that part of it?
No, we don't have any say.
That's right.
I got lost a little bit. Are these estimated city taxes, these are in addition to what they're paying, or this is the total amount that they would be paying?
Those are in addition to what they're paying. The sentence that's under the chart, I looked up what they paid are the city last year, and so that sentence is what they actually paid last year, and the estimated city taxes would be in addition to what they would pay.
So for Mr. Cole, he would owe an additional $118?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, the point I wanted to make, and Mr. Halliburton has helped me here, if we made him a water customer and he was charged at 1.5 versus 1 point, his water bill would go up 50% or 25%?
Sir, can I address that? No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. I'm sorry.
The point I'm trying to make, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I am, I will immediately, is that the increased water rate would probably be more than his increased tax rate.
Over time, I believe that would be the case. Yes, sir.
I would like to point out to anybody who's watching and who's interested in this, if the city did decide to annex these four properties this year, the first tax bill that would be due by the owners of the study area would be December 31, 2010. Since this is 2009, we don't charge taxes on a partial year, so if they were annexed in January of this year, still their first tax bill would not be due till December of next year, so the December 31 of 2010. So I know that that's important for somebody to know.
These parcels are kind of in a unique situation in the fact that I think the city has, like some parcels that we've seen in the past, has bent over backwards trying not to have to annex these properties as the city has grown to the north. Murfreesboro being a rapidly growing community, it's continued to grow all around these parcels, and they are tatted out to being in the city now. The part of it is legally in the city, and the structure's on there, the mobile homes and the one single-family residence is, you know, while technically they may not be in the city, they are in the city of Murfreesboro for all intent and purposes, and if they've received city benefits over the last several years without having to pay city taxes, that's something that's not their fault, but it's something that needs to be rectified. All their neighbors out there that are in the city pay their fair share of the city taxes to receive the services that they receive, and obviously, these parcels need to be, in my opinion, they need to be brought into the city, make the whole parcels in the city and avoid the confusion in the public safety and health for all those people that might live there in the years to come. Any other comments or questions?
I have, there seems to be a difference of opinion with Mr. Hale on the water. I would like that clarified, and I don't know if we can do it tonight. We need to do more research, but that's a difference of opinion. I don't know where you are on that with him, Ms. Adelot, but...
Mr. Young, two ways to approach that. One, we can defer action. Certainly, there's not a big rush to do anything here. This came up in the manner I told you. Obviously, it's been a situation that's taken a long time in getting to where we are now with it. So to defer action and to be able to report back at our next meeting, I think that would be on the 17th, would be no problem at all. Or if you felt that there's enough that you know now, but would like to have a clarification before we get to the city council, because there will be another public hearing if it does go to the city council. Either way, we can look into it further and be double-checked, because there's some things, this has just been a little bit confusing because of the circumstances.
I'm like Mr. Lamb. I feel in the long run, or the short run, depending on what we choose to do and what the council chooses to do, because they are the legislative body, that this needs to be in the city. But there's some issues that are not totally addressed. One is the water. I would like a little more input from staff on the history of the services that we have been provided. You know, if we've been providing garbage services for five years, or two years, or a timetable on that, you know, and itemize on what has been provided, because there's a difference of opinion between the staff and the city and Mr. Hale, and that's totally understandable.
A deferral might be in order so Mr. Adelot can meet with Mr. Hale. And Mr. Hale, I apologize, I couldn't let you speak again, sir, with the public hearing being over, but I think I would give Mr. Adelot plenty of time to be able to get all the details worked out on exactly what the conflicting statements are here, sir.
Mr. Ives was just advising me that we don't have a very lengthy agenda tonight, and if you would like to suspend your rules and allow Mr. Hale to speak, he might give us some information, might shed some light, or at least give us further avenues for investigating so that we have done the thorough job that you would like us to do.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Well, I was just going to say and comment, no matter which direction we end up going tonight, I do believe, you know, we've got what they've researched so far. The police department has responded 19 times in the last five years, and the fire department has responded six times in the last five years. They've been getting the solid waste services. You know, we certainly need to check out the water, what the issue is there, but the bottom line is, from all of our years of training on planning and proper planning, we know that these parcels should be annexed and be a part of the city. And whether we decide we want to defer and say that later, my vote will be that they are going to need to be annexed because they're part of the city, and we are providing services to them whether they've been paying for them or not. And it is unfortunate that it's not one of those things where you've come and asked for annexation, which does happen a large majority of the time, but everybody else around this property is part of the city, and by default, you're part of the city, and you've been receiving the services, and I think that's the way we need to go. But if we defer and do it on the 17th instead of today?
I agree with Ms. Jones. I would, I don't want to...
I would, I don't want to, my inclination is not to suspend the rules. I don't want to reopen another public hearing and have a debate on the floor about things that are factual in nature that you can easily check out. If you see my point on that, Counselor.
Absolutely. I just wanted the option to be presented.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Because of the conflicting statements that have been made tonight, I would support a motion to defer.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion be deferred. Mr. Hill, we will probably take this up at our next meeting, which will be two weeks from today at 1:00 in room 218 upstairs. Would you please get with the staff, and we'll try to rectify this situation as much as possible for you, sir, and thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you.
The next public hearing tonight is a zoning request for a PRD amendment of approximately 24.22 acres along Blackman Road. Park Trust is the developer. Ms. Ely?
Good evening. Thank you again, Chairman Lamb and Plan Commission members. Tonight, we've got scheduled a public hearing to consider amending PRD zone, Planned Residential District, for property located east of Blackman Road, which was formerly called Beasley Road. And the area is identified as blue on the map before you. The property is west of Blackman Road and just south of Interstate 840. It's a part of the development known as Winslow Park at Berkshire, single-family subdivision, and as I said earlier, is a zone PRD. To the east are the, is the Berkshire subdivision, which is zoned RS-10, single-family residential district, and are the villages of Berkshire, which are zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. To the west, along Veterans Parkway, is the West Lawn Development, which is currently undergoing development, and it's also zoned PUD, Planned Unit District. This request is to amend the PRD to allow the elimination of an alley that extends between lots 51 and 52 and exits onto Barnsley Drive. The lots, lots 51 and 52 of Winslow Park at Berkshire currently have single-family houses on them, and if the cable department will put up the monitor, I took a photograph showing these two houses and the location of where the alley would have come out. As you can see during construction, for some reason, that alley wasn't constructed. It was clear on all the planning documents from the zoning, the preliminary plat, as an easement on the final plat, and the construction plans, that an alley should have ran between these two houses. Because we're now in a situation where those houses are constructed and the alley is not, the developer has decided to present an alternative to having, to building that 20-foot alley between these houses. And the alternative is to have them run behind lots 50, 51, and 52, and instead of exiting on Barnsley Drive, it would come out on Cunningham Drive. This appears to be a functional option, but of course, that would be your decision to make. The Planning Commission has scheduled a public hearing to consider amending this zone. Staff will be able to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing. And there is a representative of the applicant here tonight. I think he'd like to say a few words.
He always does. Mr. Cantrell, would you like to come forward before we open the public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak, either for or against this proposal. One at a time, please. Nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I think Ms. Ely stated that it's a workable, that's not her term, but a workable situation to correct the problem. Is that a fair statement?
Fair, very fair.
With that, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. The third item, zoning requests for approximately 6.34 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, CM Gatton, and Tommy Smith developers. Ms. Ely?
Good evening. Thank you again. Mr. Lewis is putting a map up for you to show the location of the property, which we're considering a rezoning request. The property is located south of Medical Center Parkway and west of Robert Rose Drive. It's identified as orange on the map before you. The hatched area shows the area, which is within the Gateway Design Overlay District 2. This property is a total of 32.97 acres, but it currently has two separate zonings on the property. 6.34 acres, which is the orange area, is currently zoned OG, General Office District, and the remainder of the property is zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Originally, the zoning line followed the location of, the future location of Medical Center Parkway, where we thought it would go, and so since the actual physical location of Medical Center Parkway is just north of that, it's left a piece of area that has a different zoning than the remainder of the property. Property owner would like to be able to market and plan for this property with one zone district, and since the majority of it is zoned CH, he's opted to request that you zone the entire parcel CH. It will remain in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1 area. And there's a letter in your packet from Mr. Taylor, who explained the situation. Mr. Taylor is here this evening if you have any questions regarding it. The surrounding zoning of the property to the south is zoned CH, and to the west is zoned CH. To the east, it's light industrial and is also in the Gateway Design Overlay District. Properties to the north are zoned RS-15, but Planning Commission has seen a master plan for that area that doesn't show single-family residential development as what's going to be there. It's going to be a mixed use of multifamily and some retail areas, so that would be fitting with the area, and so I think that it would be an error to think that that would be developed as a single-family subdivision, just so that when you're pondering this, you can be informed. Mr. Taylor is here if you have any questions. I don't think he has a presentation for you, but staff's here also to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Mr. Taylor is shaking his head negatively that he does not have a presentation or does not desire to speak.
Does he get paid unless he speaks?
I think so, by just coming. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission, other than Mr. Young's? There's no questions, we're ready for a motion. Let's open, let's have the public hearing first. Excuse me. We'll open the public hearing for anybody that'd like to come forward. Since Mr. Taylor didn't want to come forward, I figured nobody else did. Would anybody like to come forward to speak either for or against this proposal? I had myself, didn't I? Public hearing is closed now. Mr. Young?
Mr. Chairman, this is consistent with the existing zoning in all surrounding areas. It is a correction of an era that was, I won't say an era, I'll say where the road was scheduled to go 15, 10 years ago, and where it actually ended up. It's going to make the track consistent with everything that it is, and I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Young, I think we would call that an update.
Okay.
And the final public hearing this evening is of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding parking, queuing, and loading requirements. Planning staff is the applicant. Well, Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. The final item tonight is for the amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning parking, loading, and our queuing space requirements. Recently, planning staff has taken on the task of trying to revise our ordinance in areas where it needed updating, and as we started working on queuing and loading spaces for the city, it turned into a total revision to the parking ordinance. And some of the elements I'd like to highlight for you tonight include some of the revisions that we feel are going to be, hopefully, make it easier for both developers and engineers, and clarification for their designs on the front end, and then, of course, that will also make it easier for administration on the back end. Concerning parking space, we've taken out a regulation in the definition section, and we don't feel like the definition should be providing an area for regulation. Next thing that we've done is we've added a whole new section for shopping centers, and we've broken those down into square footages of shopping centers and labeled them Neighborhood Commercial. And this is to address what we are finding in the current trends, is that we are having a lot of restaurant users go into our neighborhood shopping center areas. And this is causing problems for the developers, because at the end, they feel as though they need additional parking to accommodate their restaurant users, and they can't, they may have the parking still in sight, but they can't meet our parking space requirements. So we've tried to go in and standardize that requirement throughout the ordinance, instead of trying to decide that at the building permit stage, because the problem that we have found from that is that a lot of times, the developers already has a lease signed, perhaps the restaurant chain, and then, of course, if they can't end up taking that space in because of a parking requirement, then it becomes problematic for them in terms of their leasing agreements. The next area that we have changed is that we have added a standard for medical office to 1 to 200. Again, what we're finding is that the current standard is based on the number of doctors, number of employees, and the number of exam rooms. And a lot of times, the medical professionals are not sure at the time of the development stage exactly how many employees they're going to have, if they're going to maybe convert exam rooms into other type of uses for machinery, or even offices, just regular offices for their own purpose and general use. So what we've tried to add is a 1 for 200 standard, which is recommended through the American Planning Association, and we have used, actually, in several of our other offices, especially in the Gateway area, as an alternative source to trying to figure the parking at the front end at the development stage. The next revision that we're proposing is a reduction in the required number of spaces for our hotel users. A few years ago, we went and revised the hotel parking standard to be a 1.2 space per room requirement. And as we have developed other hotel properties, and as we are moving into trying to develop future hotel properties in the hospitality campus, what we have found from many of our hotel developers is that a 1.1 space requirement is more industry standard, and it seems to work better for them. We've had several parking requests have to come before you, all in the form of a planned development, or through the Board of Zoning Appeals, through the form of variance, and we feel as though the hotel industry has studied this and has gauged what they feel is the appropriate number of parking spaces needed for their use. The next amendment that we have made is that we've tried to standardize some of our required queuing spaces, number of queuing spaces, for drive-through and drive-up windows. We don't really have a lot of standards currently in our ordinance, and for example, if you have a convenience market and you want to add a window to maybe sell breakfast out of in the morning, that's becoming more and more popular. Currently, under our ordinance, you would have to have 10 spaces, because we don't have a defined number. The closest thing we have to that, that we could go to in our ordinance, would be restaurant. So we've tried to find areas that maybe 10 is too many for that type of use, that's really accessory to a primary use, and go in and maybe provide a more definitive number to help out on the front end to plan for those items. We've also added a standard length and width for our queuing spaces and our bypass lanes. I think that pretty much wraps up the majority of our changes that we have proposed. We did send it out to many people that do work within this realm, within our community, and received back feedback and comments. In fact, one of the comments that we added into the ordinance came from one of the engineers that's here tonight. So we've tried to implement those into the ordinance that's presented before you tonight. This has been reviewed by our legal department, and we feel it's ready for presentation. You'll need to hold a public hearing, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Logan? Thank you, Ms. Logan.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. It's your chance, Mr. Harney.
I'm giving by the hour.
What about Mr. Taylor?
Anybody else? Mr. Taylor, anybody? Seeing a debate coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. The staff has put in a lot of hours on this, and I appreciate the work, and it's a constant struggle to keep all of our ordinances updated, and you guys do a great job at it.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Chairman, as you correctly said, this is a living document. It has to be reviewed and improved, and I think these improvements are going to help the document. I think it's going to help the end users with our, one of the points you made about hospitality campus, I think this will help in the parking situation in those, parking with the several hotels. The queuing has been a possible problem in the past. I think this is a very good improvement in our zoning ordinance, and with that, I talked too much, but I will move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. We'll go on to the Gateway Design Overlay Review. One item under that today, Waterstone Office Park, Lot 8, a final design review for 22,398 square feet on 1.51 acres, thrown light industrial and GDO 3, located along Williams Drive. Mark Pirtle, Gateway LLC is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This final design review tonight's for Lot 8 of the Waterstone Office Park, it's going to be proposed to be a three-story, all-brick structure, that will actually have frontage, of course, along Williams Drive, but will also take advantage of the viewpoint of the new island and gateway hospitality area that has been created by the city in that location. We have before you tonight a final design review that is in very good order, the site plan. There weren't hardly any comments from staff, other than the standard staff comments on the site plan. We did ask them for correction in the photometric plan, which has been resolved. And also, we did have a concern a little bit about just making sure that they've left ample space around the dumpster enclosure area to provide for proper screening. Mr. Taylor feels confident that there is, but we would just like to reserve the fact that when staff goes out to do our final inspection upon completion, we'll want to make sure that the landscaping is shown as on the plan and is viable. Other than that, we have, if the cable department would like to bring up our overhead, we have a picture of the proposed elevations, so our public at home can see that. If you'll recall, I know that we've discussed a little bit about the proposed roof screening, and it appears pretty prominent in the elevation, but I think that they've lowered the height of that proposed roof screening, and from a distance, it will not be that prominent like that. I mean, it's just the way that it shows on a 2D model, but I think that really out in the field, especially since they've lowered it by over a foot, correct, Ms. Logan? It's been lowered by over a foot, that I don't think that it'll be as prominent as it appears in our current view. We have available tonight also the material board samples that were reviewed and seem to be approved by the Planning Commission at initial design review. And the applicant and the developer are here tonight if you have questions, but otherwise, we don't have any further comments at this time.
We reviewed this at the last afternoon meeting that we had, and...
Yes, sir.
We made the comment at the time, it looks like a very nice project, and the history of the developer is very good and enviable with the city, and also comments were made, I remember, about it tying in very nicely with the greenway around the lake behind it, and it looks like it's really going to fit into that area very well.
Yes, we think so, and we think that they're going to be able to utilize full view of that area. And, you know, the landscaping that they're going to do along the rear is going to be consistent with landscaping and other developments along that. It's the same developer, they have a standard landscaping that's to be utilized through there, so that when you're, if you're, you know, a member of the public and you're utilizing that greenway area and you're walking through there, that you'll have a nice, eventually, when everything's completed, you'll have a nice landscaped area to walk through, and it'll, it's really going to have, I mean, it's a wonderful place right now, I think, already, and I think this, as these projects develop, it's just going to get better.
Well, it's exactly the type of facility that we were dreaming about when the area first opened up, and it's really coming to fulfillment, and Mr. Pirtle's done a great job on it, so...
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to Platts and Plans. Tonight, we have one item under Platts and Plans, that's Old Hickory Barnes, a site planned for 9,615 square feet on three acres, zoned light industrial, located along South Church Street. Old Hickory Barnes is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan is for approximately 9,615 square feet on three acres, zoned to light industrial, located along South Church Street. This is just south, it's on the eastern side of South Church Street, just south of Middle Tennessee Boulevard. This is an existing warehouse site that is not currently being utilized and has been purchased by a new owner, who wants to use this as an area to sell outdoor storage barns, metal roofing equipment, and other outdoor furniture, such as the Adirondack chairs, picnic tables, playgrounds. tables, playground equipment. It's a reuse of an existing site and I think that we're going to continue to see more of that as we go forward. Not only are we seeing a lot of, you know, we're continuing to see new development, we're also seeing reuses of existing vacant development and that's a good thing, we encourage that. It's always a good thing to see properties that aren't utilized find a new use for them. So that's what this proposal is for tonight. The applicant has addressed the majority of staff comments. We're still working with them on the outdoor display area that's going to be on the grass area, that's going to be located for the playground equipment and the outdoor furniture. That has been an add-on since I think the original plans were submitted and reviewed. We're working with them and they have, we think we've come up with a solution and a fencing alternative and if it's acceptable with the Planning Commission tonight, if you do so approve this site plan, we would like it conditioned upon that detail being worked out with staff at the staff level prior to any permits. We also had to work very closely with the engineer in trying to make this site compatible with our new stormwater regulation and he has designed an infiltration trench that will be utilized on the site and we feel like the design that's been presented to you tonight is an acceptable design.
Ms. Logan, I guess these are storage barns configured around the
Yes, sir.
Parking area there?
Yes, sir.
And so the ones that are, are they backing up to South Church Street?
Yes, sir, they are.
No, I'm sorry. So it's the fronts of the building are facing.
The front of the little storage buildings will be facing South Church Street.
Okay. And they'll be actually selling those buildings and taking them off and replacing
Yes, sir, they will be. They're not display models, they are actually, I want that one over in the corner.
It's in the store for sale.
That's the one I take. And the one thing, I know that that, I know that that was a kind of a concern that was discussed at the staff level when we reviewed it, but by putting the fronts of the storage buildings along South Church Street, we feel that that will help. In addition, we're getting from them a front perimeter landscape yard and they are adding, which it currently does not have, we're getting a front landscape yard all the way along South Church Street and we feel like we've tried to, we're getting a lot more landscaping on the site than what is currently there with this plan and we hope that that will mitigate some of those aesthetic effects.
Will there be any type of signage attached to the fronts of those storage buildings?
None has been proposed. I don't know that it would even be permitted under our sign ordinance, I would defer to Ms. Kerr and our Building and Codes Department.
Mr. Taylor, do you remember back when Mr. Young and I were younger? We had, we had, we had a swimming pool company on Old Fort Parkway that had a pool that they turned up on its side and had a display. It was a pre-manufactured pool with a big price in it, you know, and it was basically like a, I think it was for sale, but it was like a sign out there with a big price tag and pretty unsightly and something. I just was hoping, we don't want anything like that coming in out there where it would be an unsightly thing, so I was trying to get some comments from you about that.
Mr. Lamb, I think that the planning staff has had some uncertainties about this and one of the things that's going to be, the problem is when you have inventory change out, it may change from day to day. As far as signage goes, of course, that's something that is regulated by the city and if they place signs up on it, our assigned department will monitor and see what they can do about keeping it from violating their ordinance. Certainly, we're going to advise the applicant when he comes in of what those regulations are. One of the things that does feel better about this to me is that there is a pretty good front yard off of South Church Street and they also have the landscaping that's going with it, also the green area right there at the entrance. Hopefully, that's going to help to mitigate that. Because this landscape will be going in, and that section of South Church Street is probably one of the best landscaped areas down through there.
Also, Chairman Lamb, the applicant's engineers indicated that at this time, the owner's only indicated changing out the existing signs faceplate to a new faceplate. So at this time, that's all he's indicated that he's planning on doing with signage.
Mrs. Jones?
It's this right here. Says display area out here in this little white section.
That was the display area I referred to earlier where they're wanting to put the Adirondack chairs and the playground equipment and the picnic tables and we are still trying to work those details out with the applicant. We think that we've got a small green area that will be allowed for that because they can't put anything on there that requires a drivable surface because we don't allow that. But, and then also, they've agreed to fence that area to try to keep it from abuse, that's what we want, we want it in a contained area. So that's the detail that we would like to be able to continue to work out prior to permit if you're okay with that, if the Planning Commission so chooses.
So does it have a fence drawn on there?
No, ma'am, not that drawing, but that was one of the things that we discussed with the applicant as late as this afternoon, was trying to get a fence in that area and at this time, they're thinking they're going to do like one of those, a nice split rail fence to try to contain that area. And of course, then we're also getting the landscaping around that area as well.
Well, the site is fairly unsightly right now, so I think, you know, your plans here looks like it's pretty promising to me as far as making, putting something there nicer than what we have right now. Of course, that's not necessarily saying much, but I just wanted to make sure it is an important gateway to the city like many others coming in off the interstate, so we want to make sure that whatever goes in there is not, you know, adding to any problems as far as our visual experience of people coming into the city. Mr. Young?
I was going to say, if I was selling playground equipment, I'd want it to be fenced where the kids could go play on it, but yet where it would be visible. And then the other comment I had, if I want to buy a barn and I want to walk around at the front of the barn to see, and it's going to be facing the street, there's an adequate grass strip there to walk around to that.
Yes, sir, there is adequate grass throughout that area. We have a nice, and there's a nice width of yard area that's going to be left along South Church Street before the actual barns begin.
In the past, we've had problems sometimes with storage areas that were not on the plan. So I think the applicant and with staff's help and the engineer have labeled the storage areas and the playground areas which is an improvement. I know there's some situations now where other retail establishments have put displays in that weren't in the plan and they're in the right of way and they cause problems. Some of our big boxes have done that in the past also, so I think we're learning a good lesson and the engineers are assisting us in that also.
Yes, sir. To try to avoid some of the problems that we've had, that's why we're asking for these items to be shown on the site plan and, in fact, we want that display area with the fence drawn in and the fence detail, everything nailed down concretely before any permits are issued, just so that we have that, so that we know exactly what we can expect when we go to that site.
I was just going to say, theoretically, five years down the road, they want to modify some of these, do they have to come back again and do another, modify their site plan if they wanted to move a display area of 100 feet down, up, and down or?
Yes, sir, they would have to do a site plan modification and depending on the intensity of that proposed modification would be determined at that time by the planning director whether it would be something that could be approved administratively by the staff or whether it would have to come back to you. A lot of site plan modifications, especially if they're minor in nature, is something that staff can handle at an administrative level.
That was my question, could a change be handled administratively?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The 40-foot ingress egress easement, who's responsible for maintenance of that? And I see there's no, it doesn't appear to me to be any turning lanes or anything indicated that would be done. Would that be something that we need to look at? Mr. Taylor?
We don't have to worry about maintaining it because it's going to be maintained by the property owner. The parcel that joins the access easement to the south was once part of the same tract of land and it was subdivided, so they've got an agreement when that was, when that was purchased about maintaining that. As far as laying it out, that used to be a public street.
Yeah.
And we went to a process of abandonment, so that's why it's 40-foot wide, it's real wide. So they have enough room for, and will probably use it and certainly can stripe it if you would, I'd like to make that as a condition of approval. They'd be glad to just stripe it to a three-lane, a left and a right out and an entrance in. It's no problem at all. In fact, it will be used that way.
This question has nothing to do with the site plan, but I'm just curious, are these barns going to be assembled in the 9,000-square-foot building? Okay.
No, they're coming in from off-site. They're going to be assembled somewhere else. That building's actually going to be used for employees' offices and also, he's going to have like, not as a primary part, but side part is the metal roofing that he's going to be selling and I think it'll be stored in that warehouse area.
Since they don't own this property, is it appropriate for us to require them to put in the striping?
That drive is part of their lot.
The 40-foot easement?
Yes.
Okay, it is part of the lot, okay.
Yes, sir.
The easement is for the benefit of the lot to the south.
Mr. Taylor, is that a problem?
I think that's a no, indication of a no.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve this application subject to the putting in the turn lanes and other staff comments. Stripeing.
Second?
Motion is made, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to Murphysboro. The next item is staff reports. We have two items under staff reports and other business. We'll go to Lot 9, Waterstone Office Park first. Ms. Logan, are you going to open up that discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you. We bring before you tonight a proposed revision to the architecture for Lot 9 of the Waterstone Office Park located in the gateway along Williams Drive. In fact, this is adjacent to the property that we reviewed earlier tonight. And this property, they have made a couple of changes to the exterior of the building. One was the canopy, they've changed the canopy design in terms of making it a rounded canopy instead of more of a V-shaped canopy. And also, on the building, the tower was not, did not reach all the way to the top. Before, it was only two stories, right, Mr. Lowen? Three stories, it was three stories. And then the building stepped back in. What they've done is they've taken that tower and pushed it all the way to the top and expanded that square footage out. Those are the two differences that are before you tonight and this has to have your review and approval before it can go back before the DRC for their review and approval. So if you don't mind reviewing, I mean, we wanted to see if that was okay, we would go ahead and bring it before you tonight under other business.
Mrs. Jones?
Can I just ask, I know we've looked at this before and it's a beautiful building. You know, sometimes these colors look, is this the colors?
No, ma'am. The print is not the color at all. No, it has a more, very yellow cast to it, but that is not the colors. I think they have definitely more of the browns and the reds, more the rich colors that we're looking for when you actually look at the color samples.
It's a very beautiful building.
It really is.
Any other questions or comments? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff comments. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have one mandatory referral this evening, but is that pertaining to the Lot 47 Oakley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You go to handle that, Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. And the final item for you tonight is a mandatory referral for Lot 47 of the Oakley subdivision. These owners have been working on this for a long time, they've tried to, they really want to add a detached garage to their property and there's an existing drainage easement that's causing difficulty and we have looked at it as a staff, we've reviewed it with our engineering staff and we have looked at just relocating the drainage easement where the pipe, the 42-inch pipe that's actually shown there, where the easement would actually be centered on that pipe, whereas right now, it's not exactly centered around the pipe, it would be centered and one little section of the easement would be notched out, if you will, to allow for the detached garage. And we do, staff has no problems with it, our city engineer has no problems with it. It's a minor modification to an existing lot.
Say no problem with it, I'm glad the city's able to work with the homeowner to correct something like this to allow them to do that.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to add something to this. We've looked over, we're feeling pretty good with it. We must bring this to you as a mandatory referral because that's basically the way it is, this is a city easement, we can't just give it away without going through a process. As a condition of approval, we need to have the applicants to provide to us a quick claim, excuse me, a meets and bounds description to enter into a quick claim instrument that our legal department will prepare. Now, there's two things that's being done. One is the easement's been shifted about 1.8 feet to be centered line up on the existing pipe and there's a notch being cut out. We would like to have a meets and bounds description for both so that we will cover our, so we'll be using belted suspenders and we'll have covered all of our bases and our legal department will have no future confusion on the matter.
And that's at the expense of the property owner?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? There's a motion just made, and those are rather weak, by Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, any other comments or statements?
No, sir.
You're kidding?
No, sir.
Good. In that case, I'll, Mr. Young, do you have anything?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no other business, we stand adjourned.